All right, it's now seven o'clock and I call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. Thank you to everybody in the audience for being here tonight. We are missing Tom, and he had a planned absence. And we have six of us here, so we have a quorum. Let's go ahead and move on to the flag salute. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item three, the agenda review. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Derek.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right.
Derek.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, and our student body reps were not available tonight, but we do have a blurb from Alyssa Ogul, the student body advisor. "We ended our school year off strong with our annual spirit games competition. The winners were the senior class of 2024. Our softball and boys volleyball teams also had notable finishes. Softball winning league and taking third in state. Boys volleyball in their first season ever also winning league and getting second in state. We are so proud of these athletes. We plan to start the school year off strong next year, jumping right into homecoming. The theme for homecoming this next year will be board games." All right, and there are a lot of FFA members in the audience tonight. This is a student rep period. Did any of you wish to speak? All right, Jenna.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jenna Shorter, and I'm two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, retired FA president. And I'm here tonight to talk about the accomplishments of our 2023-2040 Silverton FFA members. To kick off the year, in October, Silverton traveled to Indianapolis and competed at the national level in ag sales and agri-science. Both teams placed nationally, with ag sales getting fourth in the nation and our agri-science team placing sixth. In the winter months, we had our annual Food for America program, where hundreds of students from elementary schools in our district experienced how agriculture impacts their lives. We also had our annual alumni auction and Christmas tree sales, which helps bring in revenue for our chapter to compete at state and national levels and bring home champions. Our alumni auction this year produced over eighty thousand dollars. Following in the early months of the new year, we had our district and state convention. Many of our students placed high, and we are so proud to be Silverton FFA members. This year alone, we have won national titles, state titles, proficiencies, co-op quizzes, district titles, and we are proud to call ourselves Silverton FFA members and taking home banners left and right because of a program that our community has supported for years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. All right, we are going to move on to item five, SFEA. Would you like to come speak? And this is the entire executive team. Thank you for being here.
With the abrupt end to the school year last week, the celebrations of graduations, student growth, and end-of-the-year traditions were tarnished by the aftermath of layoffs and transfers. Staff weren't just packing up their summer, but packing up their careers into boxes, unsure when or if they would get to return to their buildings. Every building has witnessed the departure of many dedicated and talented educators due to layoffs and transfers. All told, we lost forty-one educators from across the district, and another twenty educators will be changing buildings. Of our loss, that includes a twelve-year and a seven-year employee. Their absence will be felt deeply, not just by those of us who worked alongside them, but by the students who relied on their guidance and support. The fear and apprehension teachers face going into the 24-25 school year cannot be ignored. No teacher is sure about what their job will look like, who they will be working with, or what responsibilities will be added to their workload next year. The educators will rise to the challenge because we love our students, but it was cost to our personal lives and our mental and physical health. As the budget committee meetings commence, we implore you to reconsider the budget priorities, seek additional funding, and engage with the community to find solutions. The prospect of staff cuts, larger class sizes, and general chaos in the next school year is a stark reality. The future of our students hinges on the decisions made here. They deserve a fully staffed school with teachers who have the time and resources to provide them with the education they deserve. We urge you to envision a future where we can restore Silver Falls to the district we all love as swiftly as possible. To the school board, once the dust settles on the budget for next year and the new district leadership takes shape, you must look objectively at your part in this fiasco. You must commit to following policies and determining how accountability will be taken. If that means additional board policies to prevent this from happening again, those actions remain in your hands. But the bottom line is, this cannot happen again. We want to thank the Silver Falls community for stepping up to help care for our staff and students when the district failed them. Community members have ensured our students stay fed during the furloughs, and that staff laid off have ways to seek out extra support. They have also stepped up to comfort those of us left behind. We are so fortunate to have an amazing community that we can always count on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now going to go into public comment. We're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board with your ideas, concerns, or compliments. Please keep the following in mind. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to the district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes. If speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more, comment time will be extended to five minutes. A second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. The board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen, and you likely will not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way for our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. And I'm just gonna make a special note that I know that there could be people tonight speaking about a reduction. When you do that, I would appreciate if you talk about a position instead of a person, just because that fits with our policy really well. So thank you for following that guidance. All right, is there anybody in the room who would like to start us off? Come on up, Liz.
My name is Liz Schecker, and I have two kids in the district, and...
Are you speaking for yourself or a group?
Oh, yeah, just for me.
Okay, well, three minutes then.
Okay. I'm speaking tonight in regards to the cuts made to the CTE department as a whole, and more specifically, the layoff in the ag science department and its impact to our high school's FFA program. I'd also like to clarify that my questions are to Dr. Morlock and Patrick Mulligan, not to the board, but they are questions and statements that I would like you guys to hear and hopefully follow up on. A couple months ago, we were asked to complete a survey asking where our school and educational priorities as a district and community lied, in an effort to hopefully guide the tough layoff decisions. It was very clear in the results that were presented right here in this room that the CTE program as a whole was very important to everyone, and cuts were to be avoided. Only by asking a very specific question last week was I, or really any of those outside the walls of the high school, informed that in fact, 1.75 FTE were eliminated from the department, with no answers as to what classes and offerings will be affected. What this specifically will affect is the number of students enrolled in the CTE program, which most certainly will decrease. The domino effect is the amount of Perkins Grant dollars our CTE program will receive will also decrease as it is directly tied to enrollment. So not only do the students suffer whose necessary classes for their CTE path will be eliminated, but it also affects the entire program's ability and what they can offer as unknowingly turn away grant dollars. On May 22nd, the entire athletic department launched a very large fundraising effort to avoid cuts to their programs. It wasn't until May 29th, we even learned of the cuts to the ag science department. Why were the CTE department and FFA programs not allowed the same opportunity to fundraise to avoid cuts instead of just being told their programs were cut? Where is the equity in that? Silverton's FFA program is one of the biggest, most active, and most successful in the state. Through hours of hard work, our students earn spots at the state and national levels every single year. This work isn't done during the 8:15 to 3:00 p.m. school day, but it happens after hours, led by two tireless, selfless, and incredible advisors who give up their evenings and weekends to foster and guide these future business owners, teachers, political figures, and farmers, in addition to their never-ending workload as teachers. What are we saying to these students and this program when they are not given the same opportunities to fundraise and avoid cuts, the same as the athletic program? The roots of this community are agrarian. The alumni of this school are vastly agrarian. Nearly every student who goes through a part of the CTE program will eventually play a part in every single one of us eating every single day. Show them you value their hard work, forward thinker, forward thinking, future careers, and contributions both locally and statewide by keeping the CTE funding fully intact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Liz.
And I want to just ask a question now, because I know this question came up. We've received lots of messages from people concerned about the cuts to CTE and specifically the agriculture program. And the question was raised about fundraising. Would the FFA alumni be able to help fundraise to maybe restore a half of an FTE? And I know that we had a preliminary conversation with Dr. Morlock, have not heard an update since. Is that something that you can speak on now?
Yeah, actually, so Patrick Mulligan, who's the principal, has also been in contact with a few people, and we went through it again today. So, yeah, that's something that if people want to do that, that is certainly a possibility. We didn't allow one and disallow another one. In fact, the athletic one happened before we knew it was happening and before they had identified whatever those reductions would be. So it's not something that we would stop them from doing absolutely not. And so I think that actually Patrick has been in contact with someone there who's connected. And so we did some additional follow-ups today on the stipends and the other things about the summer work during the year, because there are some other stipends too beyond just the classroom.
Okay, thank you. And that helps to know that there are conversations happening that we all just might not know about at this point in time.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Dr. Morlock?
Sure.
So we're taking a 0.5 and allowing them to fill to back to a 1.0, using those outside sources? Is that correct?
Right, so that's, and they actually did ask for a cost estimate. So Kim, to my left here, did put together what that number would be, so they have an idea what that is.
Thank you, Dr. Morlock.
You're welcome.
I don't know who to ask about online. Who's watching our online?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Would somebody in the audience like to speak? Come on up. All right, we're gonna give you guys five minutes, and we will give you an oral thirty-second warning.
Hello and good evening. My name is Logan Gray, and I'm the current Silverton FFA president, and I'm speaking on the behalf of the position of Mrs. Monica Baker. Mrs. Baker plays a major role in our FFA program, as she teaches all ag science classes, along with a majority of freshman classes. This cut was completely unexpected. As we were promised, no programs would be shut down. FFA is, one program as a whole, but our teachers both teach completely different subjects and make up different populations of our members. By cutting Mrs. Baker to part-time, you are cutting a part of our FFA program and splitting membership in half. A survey done this past week was sent out to members in our chapter, and out of the responses, eighty-five point one percent of students are enrolled or have been enrolled in the introduction to agricultural class. This class is dedicated to newer members, specifically freshmen who want to learn more about leadership, as well as plants and animals. This class makes up a major part of our chapter, and without it, we are losing almost an entire class of students. If you look on the high school's website or any curriculum guide, you will see that there are two categories of the FFA, which are agricultural science and welding and fabrication. This will take away opportunities for our students to be program completers, explore different career areas, and learn topics that allow them to be workforce-ready. To go along with this, you will also be making the FFA a much harder program to get into. This is because we are not a club, but instead, an inter-curricular program. By cutting Mrs. Baker, you are lessening the chance for students to participate, and this is not acceptable. You are cutting a program that is an absolute necessity, impacting the lives of students, and breaking the promise you had once given us. As I was recently elected chapter president, I now feel as if it is my duty to ensure our chapter stays the same and thrives more than ever. I hope that you understand the importance of her position, because without her, we lose a part of our program. Mrs. Baker is so much more than a teacher to the FFA chapter, and we need her in order to stay thriving. Even if she is cut for just a year, it will damage our chapter in the years to come. In your motto, it says, "Where every student thrives." But how are we supposed to thrive when our opportunities for success are limited? I also want to point out that Mr. Tauri and Mrs. Baker are a team. The success of our FFA chapter has been greatly benefited by having two advisors. So by cutting one, you will damage the success. At one point in time, Silverton FFA actually had three advisors, because it is such a popular program with extra work involved. I hope that you will take into consideration the impact you will be leaving on our chapter if you do end up cutting Mrs. Baker. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
I have not seen any hands raised.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience like to speak? Come forward.
Good evening, members of the Silver Falls School Board. My name is Shay Stoddard, and I'm a student of agricultural education at Silverton High School. And I will also be serving as the vice president of the Silverton FFA chapter in this upcoming school year. I am here to urge the Silver Falls School District to reconsider its recent decision to make program cuts to the agricultural science program at Silverton High School. I recognize that these are trying times for our district and our community, and that no changes made will be positive. However, as a student actively involved in FFA and our ag science classes, whose future is being threatened due to these cuts, I feel obligated to remind the board just how valuable our program is. Chartered in 1930, the Silverton FFA chapter is dedicated to making a positive difference in the lives of students. By practicing assertive agricultural leadership, students grow personally, grow in their career prospects, and grow as leaders. As of June 10th, students have spent and recorded over 24,740 experiential learning hours outside of the classroom, under the supervision of our ag science teachers, such as Mrs. Monica Baker. Students have practiced and recorded over 3,464 skills, recognized by the National Council for Ag Education, and students have devoted over 1,057 hours to doing meaningful work in the Silverton area community. Respectfully, these are figures that are not shared by any other program at Silverton High School. Our members are working tirelessly to become tomorrow's leaders in industries as diverse as welding to microbiology. It takes two strong and dedicated ag science teachers and advisors to make this vision a reality for our members. This community cannot sustain any cuts to the FFA program, and I urge the district to thoughtfully reconsider its recent cuts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you just let me know if there's anybody? I'm just gonna assume there's nobody online. Anybody else like to come speak? Jean?
Thank you, members of the board. I'm Jean Pfeiffer. I've been on the Budget Committee for, not now, but for about 25 years or so. I was the chairman of the high school relocation in '93 and in '99. So my main purpose is to bring some hope to those people that already watched what's happened. And the second reason is to let you know I'm not giving up. I still feel you could reconsider what you've already done. You need to look at the information thoroughly and not just take somebody's voice that says, gee, it's illegal. I've gone to the State Education Department. I've gone to the State Law Library. Nobody can give me anything that said that this would be against the law. It is true that ORS 271.390 was made as an exceptional law. It's made for unusual circumstances. We have an unusual circumstance. It states in here that it can be done for contracts financing any real or personal property, and we have personal property and services as defined by another ORS, that we could be applying this toward, that there's sixteen million dollars' worth of it in our budget. We don't have to be applying it towards forty million dollars' worth of labor. So I'm encouraging you to keep your minds open. Just because we're going into a budget period now, yes, probably what you've done is gonna go into that budget. That budget is required to give to the state. But we can change the budget. We can have a new hearing of the Budget Committee after, or if you do, a reconsideration. And I'm working on it. Like I say, we have a school district that's exceptional. We have exceptionalism, everything about what we do, even as you described it in your interviews with the different superintendents. Everybody said, hey, this is a wonderful school district. We want to be part of it. We need to keep it that way. In the past, a school board went and out on a limb, I guess I could say, to provide what we have, and now we're going to damage it. We may have it, so it'll take ten years or even longer to put it back together again. We have people, teachers, that were working with people and vice versa. We need to make it so it's solid again, and we need to consider it. So I'm asking you to consider it. Let's put some hope back in the formula. The solution is to amortize the costs over several years, rather than dumping it all into one year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Troy Hadley. I am alumni of Silverton High School and Silverton FFA. I wanted to give a little bit more history. One of the students already said that the chapter was chartered in 1930. My grandfather was one of those members. My great uncle is one of those members. I'm a third-generation FFA member. My kids are not in this school district, but they are already joining FFA. We have a long history of Silverton FFA being one of the top chapters in the state, and it's been that way for many years. And Silverton High School in Silverton District has been one of the top wanted people fought to get into this school district. Now we've turned that around, or we're kind of, we're in a mess. I'll leave it at that. And I've seen many, many kids throughout this state that have encouraged and grown through the FFA program. I'm one of them. My freshman year, I couldn't say four lines of Romeo and Juliet in Mrs. Tresser's English class. Now I run banquets and meeting halls, and organizations continue to see my volunteer awards. I've just recently heard of another student. Her parents actually sent notes to her first day of school asking teachers not to call on her, because she was too scared to stand up. Because of the FFA program, she, after doing a public speaking contest, she placed second in state this year at state convention. So that's just, it's a testament to this program. If you want to save money, and I've said this since, for forty years, well, thirty years, since I was in the program, consider FFA as another science class. We learn more science in the ag room than we ever did in biology room. Thank you.
Emily Rayo, Silver Falls Social Studies teacher, and just for myself. After six years in the district and the only social studies teacher in my building, I found out my position was cut, and I was involuntarily transferred to the high school to replace two teachers who were laid off. This has left my coworkers at Butte Creek to figure out who, how, and if social studies, spirit weeks, district dances, food drives, and history night will be covered next year. After the furlough days, I will now spend my summer packing up and moving my classroom, learning a new curriculum and a new school after six years. I've had to face students multiple times a day last week, wondering how they will learn social studies next year. I have to stand in front of them, helpless, and try to reassure them that everything will work out, but also being completely unsure about how things will look. Mine is just one of endless stories that licensed staff have. The ripple effect of one position lost in a building will affect students and staff for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anybody else in the room?
My name is Matthew Bieleberg, and I am representing myself. This year, this past year, I finished up my junior year, and I was elected to FFA chapter treasurer. I am speaking to you today to express my deep concern regarding the proposed removal of a key position within our CTE and ag program. As a student and member of the community and a strong advocate for the future of ag education, I am extremely worried about the adverse impact this decision can have on our students. In the past, our school district has been a huge advocate for agriculture. We are built on agriculture, and our program has played a pivotal role in creating amazing people involved in our community. Two years ago, as a freshman, I started getting involved with FFA and ag classes at the high school. Since then, I have taken both welding and fabrication and ag science classes. The Silverton FFA is huge, with over 120 members, and therefore needs two advisors who are willing to put in extra hours to ensure our student's success. I know what the proposed removal will look like, and it is not good. Every student in the ag science classes and welding fab classes is against this proposed cut, because it will hinder their ability to learn career skills they can use as veterinarians, agronomists, fabricators, and even business owners. In these classes, I learned how to weld, use tools in a fab shop, identify different plants, seeds, weeds, and how to effectively sell products. I have competed in state ag mechanics three times, agronomy or crops twice, parliamentary procedure twice, and agriculture sales once. I've also competed over the past years in a variety of other events, although I did not place at state in those. In fact, as a member of the ag mechanics team representing Oregon and Silverton at the 97th Annual National FFA Convention in Indianapolis in October this fall, I am concerned about our chapter's ability to keep our students and the chapter members competitive with other chapters throughout the state. I encourage you all to look at the Silverton FFA website to see all the aspects of the program that are in danger of being cut back. If these proposed cuts do indeed go through, how can these students hope to learn these crucial skills they so desperately want to learn to put to use for a competition or a future career? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matthew.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yeah?
We do have somebody online wishing to speak.
Okay, can we promote that person?
Daniel, can you please promote Amadea Weber?
Hello, Ms. Weber. Can you hear us? Can you hear us? We cannot hear you yet.
It looks like Amadea may have lost her connection, so if we want to see if there's another person in the audience, we'll watch for her to return.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi there.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Stafford. I have kids in the district, and I am speaking for myself. I would like to share our family's experience with Ram Room and our extreme disappointment that this will not be available to the many, many kids who go to Ram Room daily in the coming years. I have a son who has been seeing the reading teachers at Butte Creek for his entire school career. He's now wrapping up another school year and ending up at just a grade level below, which is the closest he's ever been to being on grade level for reading. As parents, we are elated and proud of the growth our son has made this year. We know that without Ram Room, he wouldn't be at this point today. Our son struggles with the challenges of dyslexia, and the professional help from these outstanding teachers has not only improved his reading skills and strategies, but given him the confidence to read for enjoyment. Reading is the basis of any education, and we couldn't imagine how much more of a struggle school would have been without the Ram Room. I am fortunate to be the parent representative on the Butte Creek PBIS team. In my time spent in those meetings, I have learned some amazing facts about the Butte Creek reading interventions. Butte Creek is currently able to serve all kids in need of reading intervention. There are 90 kids using the Ram Room services. That is 32% of the school population. Ram Room catches the kids in the middle who need more support than a classroom can offer them, but not so much that the child qualifies for a private for an IEP. I am so worried for not just my own child, but all the children who won't have this available to them. I urge the board to reconsider the drastic amount of rifts made to the Title I ELD department of Butte Creek. It is in significant interest of the current and future student success in reading that I ask this. While I know that drastic cuts are necessary to right the ship, please make sure there is a seat for every student on that ship before taking off at full steam ahead. Silver Falls School District is supposed to be where every student thrives, and I urge you to stand by this motto, even in the bleakest of times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it look like Ms. Weber's back?
Yes. If we can try promoting Amadea Weber again, please, Daniel? Thank you.
Okay. I had to restart my audio. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay.
Ms. Weber, are you going to speak for yourself or a group?
I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
Okay. We're going to give you three minutes, and Erin will give you an oral 30-second warning.
Okay. In education, we like to talk about the importance of relationships, and at the middle school, there is a group of students for whom this is profoundly true, are at-risk kids. Yet, we are about to take away a person and a program who gets many of those marginalized kids into the building and through their most challenging classes. LeAnn Kraxberger's program. I know we're not supposed to talk about individual people, but I don't know the name of her program, so she's my default name for that program. LeAnn's program was started by Inez Bradford around five years ago because we had a high need for support for students who didn't fall under the umbrella of a sped program like SLP, but were being kicked out of classes for behavior or who were chronically not coming to school or were chronically not turning in their work. These are kids who are falling through the cracks, and Inez and LeAnn gave them a home in school that caught them. It then became a place that helped those kids thrive. After Inez's departure to the high school, LeAnn took on that program and made it even greater. This program has enabled building relationships with students that will close themselves off from and refuse to engage with adults because they have been so often failed by them. This program has also given them a class period and consistent space that provides accountability for them. These kids have gone from nothing, in many cases, to communicating with teachers, completing assignments, and doing so with quality. LeAnn and her program is for these students what our LRC teachers are for the sped kids on their caseload. I worry that by taking away her and her program away from these kids, they will quickly disengage and slide back into negative behaviors that could have serious ramifications on their long-term well-being. We need this alt-ed program at the middle school, and we need someone to continue doing that work. And that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. All right. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak?
So, don't mind me, I'm going to stand up just because that's how I roll, but I'm directly affected now by two of your program cuts, and I just learned about one of them, which is really sad that you, as a school district, aren't informing parents. My son's Ram teacher is now being cut at Butte Creek. That is not okay. The kids that started school during COVID, you made a promise to them that they would not fall behind. They are in this program to where they won't fall behind. Now, I get to go out and go pay a tutor for something that you guys are not providing. Additionally, back when COVID hit, you went around to all the schools, right? Asking about programs. Derek did. There was an analysis that was done. I specifically was made a promise that you guys would look at FFA and eighth graders joining FFA and that collaboration between the middle schools and the high school. Mr. Towery and Ms. Baker made that happen for my son as an eighth grader last year. He was the only one who was made that way. You cannot cut FFA. There was a recent study that was just done that millennials coming in to the workforce aren't prepared for interviews. They're unprofessional during their interviews. These kids are not going to be that. These kids know how to handle themselves. They know how to conduct interviews. They know how to be professional and be able to work in society. You guys cannot cut FFA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Last call for the first public comment. Can you provide your name in relationship to the district?
Yes, I can. My name is Bruce Elliott. I've been a counselor in the district for 22 years.
And you're speaking for yourself or a group?
For my wife. She just can't be here, so...
Okay, got it. All right.
So, she's on a letter to all of you and to principals, et cetera, and so I just wanted to read that for the sake of the community also here. So, when I say "I," I don't mean me. Okay. "I wanted to read this letter at the school board meeting tonight, but I cannot attend, so I decided to send it to you instead. I'm speaking to you as a music teacher and parent of three graduates of Silverton High School. I've taught elementary music here for 18 years at Eugene Field, Robert Frost, Mark Twain, Central Howe, Scotts Mills, and Pratom. I want to thank you for providing music at all K-5 and K-8 schools this year and for keeping elementary music in the budget for next year. This was the first year in decades that Silver Falls had a music teacher at every school. Our five elementary music teachers provided every student at our nine elementary schools with music at least two times a week. We experienced camaraderie and excitement as a team, sharing ideas, supporting each other, and putting on a successful choir festival. With multiple performances at each school, every student was able to perform. The number of music positions, five people, which is 4.5 FTE, was the minimum number of teachers recommended by the Music Task Force, which met during the second half of 2021 to strategize how to get music into all of our elementary schools. With the loss of two teachers for next year, we've lost 43% of music teachers and now have only 2.5 FTE left to cover nine schools. This puts quite a strain on the remaining teachers. Here are the numbers that the three or 2.5 FTE remaining teachers proposed assignments for next year have, and this is using enrollment numbers from 5124 for comparison. There are 1,776 students divided as follows. 693 students at two schools, Robert Frost and Mark Twain. 784 students at four schools, Victor Point, Butte Creek, Scotts Mills, and Silvercrest, and there is one teacher at each of those two divisions. And then, a half position, which is 299 students at three schools, Evergreen, Central Howe, and Pratom. Imagine trying to remember all those names, let alone get to know the students and build trust. Of the nine schools listed above, only one music teacher was at only one of the nine schools last year. That's right. All other eight schools will get a different music teacher from the one that they have known this year. This will cause significant disruption in learning. Music education is an important part of a school's culture and community. Teachers get to know their students as they grow year after year. They provide continuity. No teachers just plug and play in the life of a school. Music teachers will have to get to know eight new school communities, eight, a bunch of different classrooms with different instruments and setups. Both of these situations will create unnecessary stress and set our music programs back.
Bruce, that's time...
I won't have the time to be able to finish that, but I thought those were the points that I think the community should hear.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Nancy Titus. I'm a veterinarian and a business owner at two different clinics in Woodburne and Cambie. More importantly, I'm a mom of two kids that will be going to the high school next year. I was an FFA member for four years. I held offices in my chapter as well as my district office. If I had not had gone into a beginning agricultural class, I would not be veterinarian. I would not be a business owner. Can you imagine if all of these kids behind me weren't in FFA and they weren't in a beginning A class? You would not have any business owners. You would have half. You're cutting this program in half. When I was in FFA, it was a challenge to go against Silverton FFA members. If you're cutting their program by cutting their advisors in half, you are just denying the entire community of business leaders in the future, people that will be in your positions. You need to think about the cascade effect that it's having on the community. This is not sports. I was a three-sport athlete, and that did nothing for me. FFA did everything. You really need to take that into account. They need those advisors. They have to have them in order to be, in order to learn how to be community members like you guys. Set the example, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm going to interrupt for just a moment. I totally agree, Nancy. I was in FFA for four years and exactly what you said. I do want to fact-check a little bit, though we talk about the number of positions being cut. We've gone, we had two FTE, and we're going to one and a half? Okay, so we're, I just want to make sure that that is clear. Anybody else? Jenna?
Hi, I'm Jenna Turner. I'm talking for myself. I would just like to emphasize that our chapter members and our community were not upset about necessarily this next year, but redeeming the program as it is. I have been in FFA for four years, and we've worked really hard to build what we have. And you're not just cutting a half a position. I know that's how you have to view it financially, and I'm not saying that you guys are in a hard position. I could never do what you're doing. But, I really want you to view this as people's lives you're impacting. Everyone has said it 100% correctly. It's not just next year, it's these kids' lives. I know kiddos who were not able to get into the program their freshman year because it's so competitive. We talked about it being intracurricular. You cannot be in FFA unless you're enrolled in an ag class, and that's a national FFA requirement. That is not something that Silverton sets. And that is something very, very important because we have our three-circle model, which is classroom, SAE, and then our projects. And that is something I really want to emphasize. It's not just, these kids can't just come into school after school and join FFA. They have to be in the classroom. And our intro-level classes is what gets them in the classroom. To compete at the national level, you have to have two consecutive years in FFA. And if you're not in the classroom, your freshman year, and you want to compete your junior year, you would not be able to. And so, by cutting these programs just next year, you're cutting kids two years down the road not being able to compete at the national level. And so, I am not saying it's your guys' fault, but we have a community behind us who is in support of FFA, who is in support of agriculture. You're producing what you eat daily. It's not just the farmers, it's the marketers, it's the business owners. FFA is so, it's so big. You would be amazed at how many kids come into the program and how many faces that we get to talk to daily. And so, please don't view this as a half a position. Please view this as people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Anybody else? I just want to note that Jenna did all that without notes at all, spoke from her heart. That's really impressive. In fact, every...
I learned that in FFA.
Yes, that's right. That's right. Every student tonight was super impressive. I even, the hand gestures were not lost on me. Like, you guys know your craft, and I really appreciate your being here tonight and speaking. I'm probably speaking for all of us. All right, we're going to move forward then to the Administrator and Staff Report, 7A, Budget and Staffing Updates. Dr. Morlock, would you like to update us?
Sure. Thank you. Thanks to everybody who spoke. I think these are always the hard things to go through. You know, it's, we have a group here tonight that's very excited about the program they're talking about, and I know we've heard from people who are interested in music and other kind of sports we have, and special education, social studies, language arts, math, science, art accelerated options, world language, the list goes on, right? And we have all of those things, and those are the difficult parts. I think it's also important to remember that what you had is not something that you could sustain because it was far beyond where that budget will be in the future. However, as you build forward, when we finish this and we go through this process, you will then, what you build is going to be up to you, and those are the kind of choices that you'll get to make moving forward. And so, I know that this is a terrible time, but we've made some choices, I think, that will at least bring back some of those things, and then, as we go into the budget meeting, we'll talk about opportunities in the future that you'll have to build forward. The first thing I wanted to get off the table is that we are not going to close the schools as we talked about before, as we had done those studies for both Pratom and Evergreen that we had talked about. We, and we'll come back and talk a little bit about the transfer process later, but we believe that we can equalize or at least more equalize the classroom sizes across the board and not have to close those two schools for next year. So, I just wanted to get that out there. We had talked about it a few times, but we believe that we can do more equal class sizes and still sustain where we are with the cuts that we've made so far. So, I wanted to get that out there. At this point, we have identified all the licensed, classified, and admin non-repositions. They've all been identified except in a couple of key things. So, number one, in the food service area, we've not made those reductions yet because we're still going through contract negotiation. The board did approve us to move forward to negotiate, so we'll still be working on that, and there may be additional reductions in those areas, and that's part of the contract process. Tonight, also, as many of you may know, Dan Bush, who is our Assistant Superintendent/HR half and half, he is being named the North Marion Superintendent, so his position will be changed into just a simple Director of HR, so it'll be a singular position. That position will be retained going forward, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear for everyone, as I'd gotten several questions about that, so it'll reach...
Is that a budget reduction as well?
It's a small reduction, yes. It wasn't a huge differential. It wasn't a huge differential in cost, but it will be, it will be a some reduction, yes. The transfer window, as we spoke about before, has now closed, and we'll be working with our district office staff as well as our school administrators to look at how we might build a balance. Some of those, we do have some that are interested, who are coming from outside the district in, and we have some who would like to move around. So again, that's part of that strategy to balance the class sizes better than we might be able to now, so there may be some opportunity to make it so we're not quite so imbalanced in certain schools and certain grade levels. So that's quite a bit of work. I'll give you an update the next time we're going through that process. But that has now closed, and we do appreciate the board allowing us to do that again. We think that's gonna allow some flexibility in staffing the classes to make things a little more equal across the board. Transportation had come up several times. The changes after we did all of the rigmarole of trying to figure them out, it came down to really was gonna be about a savings of a hundred thousand. And it was going to require schedule changes, flip-flopping the things, having a time where students would release at elementary and have to hang out for twenty-five or thirty minutes till the buses came. The way that the turnaround works when you reduce the number of routes was gonna go from a thirty-minute to forty-minute turnaround to an hour and fifteen, an hour and thirty. So we've landed on we're not going to reduce from the forty-two to thirty-one, and we're gonna leave the schedules as they are rather than upset that apple cart and move forward, and we'll have to find the reductions in other places. So at this time, we're not gonna make those reductions. We'll have some additional ones that we can do. We've talked about some athletic buses. We may be able to do some combination of both a regular bus and the type twenties, which are the shorter ones, that you don't have to have a CDL license to drive, but we'll combine those things. So we've gotten to a place where the four-day week, as we've done that study, was either gonna cost us more money or not save us enough. And after working with all of our building principles and looking at how the schedules would lay out, it came down to just not being a great option and creating a lot of waiting time and really long, longer bus rides than we were really comfortable with depending on where you were. So unfortunately, we can't realize that savings at this time, but the consensus was this is a good choice not to make because it was not worth making this huge amount of changes in families' lives and school schedules and everything else. So any questions? I'm gonna pause there and see if you have any questions on transportation.
No, I do think it's probably a good decision on the transportation. Those kids don't need to be on that, you know, that'd be appreciable length of time added, and they don't need that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think a lot of it, even just coming down to the thirty minutes of unstructured time, and if you've ever been around a group of fourth and fifth graders for thirty minutes with nothing to do, I think you might understand that, too. So that change actually is in the balanced budget that will come forward to the Budget Committee on Wednesday and Thursday. So everything that I'm talking about is already included in the budget documentation. So these were things that we had to land on, that Kim here forced me to land on, or we had other ones we had to get to that point so she could produce the budget to get out of the Budget Committee. So these were decisions that we had to make in the last week as we get down to the end of our studies. School administrator changes have also been finalized. There'll be no more changes on those. I put a message out to staff and the board, so you kind of saw where we went. We did lose two, we reduced two of the positions at school administrators, and so then we've done some other shuffling. We have people covering a couple of buildings and some changes in that. But we're, we've kind of finished with that process, and we think we have the coverage necessary and have made some, some choices that makes the most sense. The property behind Robert Frost, the so-called forty acres, which is really thirteen point four six, has been listed. We have also worked with now the city to get the paperwork in and do those kinds of parts and pieces, so that's underway. I do want to be clear that there is no guarantee that that will, that revenue will arrive in twenty-four, twenty-five. We are not counting on that revenue in this budget. It's not in there. We don't know if that will happen or not happen. So it's important just that everybody understands that that's not, that's something for your future, and we'll talk about that at the Budget Committees around how you look at an ending fund balance and then how you're able to grow forward more quickly. I think that's something that you've heard tonight about losing programs, and there are some strategies to get you back on track much faster. And that property sale could be part of that strategy, but we are not including it in the budget. So there's no even like, we're gonna guess we're making this budget. No, it's not in there at all. So it doesn't exist until you actually make the sale, and that could take a while, so we're not quite sure. So that's why it's not in there when you see that. Later on tonight, we'll also talk about an early retirement MOU that we're just having to discuss, you don't have to vote on, with our Licensed Association. It's important to understand how those work. So just generally, there are two parts to that. Number one, when you take the differential between somebody who has a lot of experience in teaching and someone who has fewer years of experience, the differential between their salaries is a savings. And it may or may not be as much of the savings as we're, as you'll see later on tonight, we're talking about the amount necessary for the HRA contribution. Additionally, however, you're also pulling someone from the RIF list, so someone who may be thinking about retiring, we pull somebody, we're recalling now another staff member who has lost their position. Additionally, you're also saving the money that you'd be spending, it's about eight hundred and sixteen dollars a week times twenty-six weeks, you're saving that amount of money that you'd be paying into unemployment. So there are some savings in those things. It's a limited area, it's a limited time, and we'll talk about the details, but I just wanted you to understand that there are, there are enough savings in there, as well as we're able to pull people back from the recall list, the not-yet-place list, who may not otherwise have a job. So it's, it's kind of a multi-pronged thing. There'll be some financial savings in it, however. So even if it is not apparent in the differential between the two salaries, there are savings in unemployment, and we've all kind of worked out those details. So we'll talk about that MOU later. Okay. And then finally, and I know I've said this before, next year will be hard, and it will be tight. And I hope that everybody understands it's gonna take everybody's work toward making sure we're not spending. You know, one of the things that we did early on when it first started is we cut off the P-cards, and that was a big shock because we were using those to get the things they needed for their program. And in that time, as we reduced the noun of those things, we saved thousands and thousands of dollars by having to make other choices. And that means it's everybody's job, not just the board, not just the district office, not just your administrators, it's everybody's job. Every dollar you save will be every dollar you can use in the future, and that's, the growing of that is really important. It will get better if you stick to a budget and remain under that budget for next year. And that's when we talk about how tight this budget is, it is really tight because we tried to reduce as little as possible, right, without the destruction of things as much as we could. So I think that's really important to do that. And I know that you'll be monitoring that in a different way. We've talked about the different committees and other things that you'll have and the learning that you've done and will do through this next budget process. You'll have new people on board, you'll have a new superintendent, and you'll all be able to kind of build that, that future again. I think, actually Lori said it earlier, I wrote it down, it was such a nice way to say it, Lori, and I forgot how you said it, and you look, I wrote it down. She said envision a future for Silver Falls School District, and that's what you'll get to do, but you'll have to stick to a tight budget and will have to get through this. And, you know, any other savings we can make, and we'll continue to work through, we'll be working with the next, with Kim Callison as she arrives in July. I will still be probably working with her quite a bit to get her up to speed and doing those things. She's finishing her other job, so she still has to do that. And we'll continue to work on how we can get all the things back in. So there'll be some shifts and changes as people decide to move or retire. So that's what we have for updates right now. So I want to let you know that those kind of important concepts that we were talking about, transportation, the closing of schools, the early retirement, which we'll talk about in a second, and then, the other one, the second one, I've lost track of it. Oh yeah, food service, we're still working on. Okay? Yep.
Standing committees that you were just referencing, I just want to make sure that that doesn't fall through the crack with the new superintendent interim coming in. So I'm assuming you're gonna have a list of kind of priorities before your term ends. I know there's like not a whole lot of time, and I know she's very busy finishing up her stuff. I know that that's gonna be really important so that we follow these goals and don't make the same mistakes.
Yeah, we've actually, we've met a few times already. She's been on the phone, our email's up and running, so we've been trying to include her, loop her into those things, but we won't let that one fall off the board. That's actually, that one among others are things. We're putting together a list of here are all the things that we can remember so far. And again, I'm not going very far because I'm at the WESD and you're one of our component districts, so I'm around and accessible. But yeah, we're, there are several of those things that we'll continue to work on throughout the summer.
Anything else? All right, Kim?
Yes, thank you very much.
Kim D.
Yes.
We're gonna have to say Kim K. and Kim D. now.
Well, thank you very much, Board, and to our community and staff that are here tonight. And I, I just want to start with saying it can never be said enough, yet I, I again want to take a moment to acknowledge the immense impact that this budget crisis has had on our students and on our staff and on every single person in this community. There is absolutely no question that every single reduction is beyond painful, and there is definitely no question that the loss of wages that our staff are enduring through these furlough days, it is absolutely devastating to see those negative amounts on those pay stubs. The most important thing that we can do is to make sure that this never happens again and to take the difficult but absolutely necessary steps to create a path for long-term financial stability here at Silver Falls. And so to accomplish this, there have been months of critical work to identify the extent of the budget crisis. There's actually a lot more to it that I've actually learned in three short months of digging into this, and a lot of depth to that, but we, we've identified where we are, and that's what it requires to be able to build a plan forward. We have completed the crucial task of participating in the 2024 Oregon School District's Short-Term Borrowing Program. That is the official name of the Tax Anticipation No-Pool, the TAN pool. We did receive funds last week, and we will have sufficient cash flow for the coming months. We'll talk more about that here shortly. Critical work collaborating with our associations, our administrators, to do the absolutely impossible task of identifying the reductions that are gonna be required for us to be able to make it through the next school year, and all of which has led to the information that was required to build a budget for 2024, 2025 that allows us to operate within the revenues we anticipate receiving. Look forward to working with our Budget Committee later this week and throughout the rest of the month so that we can take that first step on this path to rebuilding Silver Falls. So want to let everybody know, enrollment reports and financial reports were literally finished about six fifteen this afternoon and are posted to Board Book. As is typical for this time of year, we have seen a slight decrease in enrollment just from last month. We continue to see that as the school year ends. And at this time, our kindergarten enrollment is unknown for next year. That creates challenges in forecasting our revenue, which is directly tied to the number of students that walk in the door. In terms of the financial report, I'll start with maybe the disappointing news. As we are within just weeks of the end of our fiscal year, we are projecting that our revenues will likely be about two point nine million dollars under what was anticipated. That is absolutely huge pill to swallow. It's made developing next year's budget very eye-opening in how we project revenues and a lot of research and documentation into every revenue figure and where that figure came from, what the source was, and that it will be continued to be analyzed ongoing next year.
Kim, can I stop you there?
Absolutely.
Two point nine less than anticipated, at what point anticipated?
So in May, April, May, June of a year ago, almost exactly a year ago, when the budget was adopted for 2023, 2024, the anticipated revenue was fifty-three million dollars. This year's revenue is, in essence, coming in two point nine million dollars below that. It is important to point out that this report does not show that because we did receive three point eight million dollars in the form of a loan. So it is creating a positive ending fund balance of approximately a million dollars, but that is because a three point eight million dollar deposit was received in the form of a loan. So it's, it, it doesn't look as bad as it is, but we, we did miss our revenue projections. So just wanted to make sure, point that out because, yes, the bottom line does look like we have a positive ending fund balance. We do have a positive ending fund balance only due to a temporary financial loan.
But that was the target that Dr. Joe talked about, so.
Was the target. On the bright side, as Joe was sharing, reducing our unnecessary expenses is our new norm, and it is proving absolutely successful. So the burden carried by our staff through the furloughs that can never happen again is part of the bright side here, but the savings and reductions in spending is indicating that we may actually end this year with expenses below where we budgeted. We right now are projecting that our expenses will end up one hundred nine thousand dollars under what we plan to spend. That is, again, very, very hard to see a bright side on because of the, the burden that has been carried by our staff, but it, it, I believe it proves that it's doable. I do believe that since our spending freeze these last few months, things have been tight, but we've been able to continue with necessary operations. We have not had significant losses in programs and, and operations. So I'm actually looking forward to what our staff have shown they can do and looking forward to continuing to, you know, just maybe think about things differently because the most important thing to me is to make sure our staff are not negatively impacted through furloughs or reductions in force ever again. This has been extremely difficult. So with that, again, those reports are available online on Board Book, and we'll look forward to diving into more in the Budget Committee meetings.
Thank you, Kim. Now, Joe, you said that we were gonna talk about the early retirement incentive MOU later?
We are. Actually, we skipped over it and went right into Kim's, so I'll go right back to it. If you see it, I think it's on seven.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. And so that was, that attachment was in there. I talked a little bit about the financial strategy behind it. It's got a limited scope, right? So it's, we're talking about in the next couple of months, between June first and August thirty-first, if people retire there, we do have to have three members selected to do it before it actually does activate because there is a small tipping point on that. It is a deposit of a thousand dollars a month into an HRA, so it helps with folks who might need to pay the health insurance, and it'll go for two years on that. So again, this is a short-term thing. People have to retire and then do, have that date backdated to June first, somewhere in between June first and August thirty-first. So those, I sort of went through the financial details. We wanted you to be able to see it, we wanted to put it out there publicly so you had an idea that it was happening as one of our strategies to try to reduce costs if we can. So again, that is, we're under a bit of a short timeline to get that out the door, so I want to make sure that folks knew about it and the board knew about it if you had any questions about, about it happening.
Does anybody have any questions about the MOU?
Just are there rough numbers as far as like estimates and conversations with the union leadership about number of folks that might be interested in that program?
I don't have that estimate, no. Yep.
I'm assuming it's not been communicated to members yet, but tomorrow, maybe?
We're working on it, and I think it's supposed to be ratified by the fourteen, or we're actually, they're gonna, I think we're moving forward with it by the fourteenth is when it has to be done.
Okay.
They're going to sign tonight, so there we go. Thank you very much. Okay, so we want to make sure that you had it out there so you could see.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate the work on, that's gone into this. If we don't have any more questions about the MOU, we're gonna go into item eight, discussion items, and we're going to talk about Budget Committee applicants and their interviews. So we have five applicants, and the procedure is that we're gonna ask the applicants to come address the board, and it's basically like an introduction. We're gonna give you five minutes, and then the board doesn't have a set of questions. We are going to just follow up if we have like a clarifying question to ask, and it's just an opportunity for us to get to know you a little bit more before we appoint somebody. So we have five people on the list. I'm not sure all of them are here. I will call on folks in the order that it's listed on the agenda, and we do have applications in front of us because they're on Board Book. Am I missing anything? Am I missing anything, Board, Debbie? Okay. So Deborah Butler, would you be able to come address us, please? Hi.
I can talk really loud.
The...
So I'll try not to yell.
Okay, good.
Hello.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, I'm Deborah Butler and I just heard about this position recently and I thought that sounds interesting. And so I just threw out an application and just, I'm the kind of person that's awfully strange that I like budgets because they're challenging and they set a plan for what is going to be going on and framework and they're just interesting. And I have a lot of experience in, I've worked at the school district level years ago and I, not as a budget, but just in the office and as bookkeeper, a lot of bookkeeper. I'm a state treasurer. I'm a music teacher by vocation and I actually love accounting. So it was a hard decision to choose between the two, but I think the music book got me. And then now I still like accounting. So I do a couple of nonprofit 501(c)(3)'s budgets and it's just kind of fun. And I'd like to know how this Budget Committee works and I'd love to see how it, how they're all, I mean, budgets are creative and challenging and the whole thing is to balance them and I just think it'd be interesting to do this, to be a member and see what happens there. And so...
Okay. Any clarifying questions from the Board? We really appreciate your application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to state how awkward this is.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
We're interviewing in public with everybody.
Next on the list is Jacob Plotfelter. Hi, Jacob.
Next.
Hi there. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jacob Plotfelter. I was a member of the Budget Committee from 2016 to 2021. I have worked in public finance for the last decade. I worked at the Marion County Finance Department for five years. I've currently worked at the Salem-Kaiser School District Finance Office for the last four and a half years. I understand that, you know, this is a short-term appointment. You need somebody who knows what they're doing. This is not a on-the-job type of learning situation. I understand the role of the School District Budget Committee. I understand the process. I understand how the meetings flow and work. I've been there, I've done the work. I have lived and breathed this stuff for the last decade of my life. So, you know, I don't know what else to say. I will say, you know, obviously I believe that I am the best candidate for you, but if for whatever reason, you do have a couple of other great candidates here tonight. And so if it's not me, I would support Creighton-Helms. The guy's, he's got an outstanding resume. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
I guess I got one. It was going through this, looking at resumes. For me, I'll just be just who I am. The complexity of going through this budget with all the different type of grant funds, state funds, how they should be used, not used. Are you familiar with as far as state laws and how some of those funds should be used or could be used?
Yep, absolutely. I mean, one of the things that I deal with every day in my professional life is the difference between state and local funding versus federal funding, restricted funding versus unrestricted funding. You know, the difference between your general fund and your title funds, your SIA, your high school success money, your ESER money and all of that. I will say that, you know, as a school district, my, as a school district, I believe that our number one priority is absolutely doing the things that only a school district can do. And I feel like, and this is not specific to Silver Falls or Salem-Kaiser or any other adjacent district, but we seem to be finding scope creep in our mission as school districts. And, you know, the mission is to put teachers in front of children in classrooms. And what I see happening is school districts are doing work that maybe should be done by the Marion County Health Department or the Oregon Department of Human Services. And, you know, so, yeah, to go back to your question, yes, I am very familiar with the requirements of, you know, spending general fund money versus title money, ESER money, high school success, all the various restricted grants. Again, I live and breathe that stuff every day.
I've got just a clarifying question. Also, this is very awkward to do this in public.
Sure.
But if you could, in your application, it talks about you're currently employed in the Budget Financial Office. Can you unpack just like what's your day-to-day role? What's that look like?
So I'm the procurement manager at Salem-Kaiser Public Schools, second-largest school district in the state. So every purchase requisition or every, how would I phrase this? Every dollar that gets spent outside of payroll comes through my office for approval and vetting to make sure that it's appropriate, to make sure that it falls within the requirements, you know, for those specific funds. So that's my day-to-day work. We do a ton of public improvements. We are, you know, we're in the middle, well, we're at the tail end of a significant public improvement bond for our schools. We're at the tail end of the ESER money to, you know, spend that up to benefit, you know, the learning loss during COVID, all of those things.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Creighton-Helms. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board. I appreciate those words, Jacob, and appreciate Dr. Joe getting the memo for matching blazers.
I'm glad you had your email to make sure we had it.
It's surreal kind of being back here. I was a teacher here a number of years ago, so it's kind of neat to be back in the building. I would say my interest in this is an intersection of who I am professionally and what my personal desires are. I would say professionally, I am currently the Director of Student Services and Federal Programs for the Jervis School District. Within that role, I manage eight to nine different departments or programs for the district. That includes special education, ELD, early learning, federal programs, counselors, nurses, summer school, welcome center registration, migrant newcomers, foster care, homeless, and several others. I manage the majority of our title grants, our IDEA. Over the last seven years, I have written, been awarded, and managed over a million dollars of grants for the district, which we are very proud of. I am a sitting member of the Willamette ESD Budget Committee and to my knowledge, this year, I am the only central office administrator in the state of Oregon that has passed both national certification exams for the School Finance Officer, which is recognized by OASBO, and the School Human Relations Officer. I fully appreciate and respect the impact of fiscal management on a district and the many different ways in which that takes place. Personally, I have three kids in the district. One of them is an incoming kindergartner. He's about 15 feet behind me and I am on borrowed time at the moment. He is on his third Peppa Pig episode. I also have an incoming first grader and an incoming fifth grader. And I recognize that decisions that are made in these contexts not only impact my children, but they impact my neighbors' children and they impact our community. And I believe that at its very best, this district is a reflection of our community. And so I believe that there is a moral imperative to participate in a process that can help move this district and move this community forward. And so given that opportunity, I humbly request your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Helms.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Kyle Palmer. I haven't seen, there he is.
Swinging down the comfort.
Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Chair Trager, members of the Board. I'm Kyle Palmer. I have been a member of the City of Sorensen's Budget Committee for the past 20 years, still am a member of that committee. I believe I have a couple more years on that term and served for 18 years as a city counselor or mayor in the city. During that time, I had extensive experience with municipal budgeting to Board Member Ores' question, including restricted funds, non-restricted funds, the source of revenue, the various ways that it gets spent. I was the chair of the committee that oversaw the building of this school in 2007 for three years and we dealt with a number of complex financial decisions throughout that process and were able to exert restraint and return about $1 million to the voters and do some things that we didn't think we'd be able to do. And so I helped financially with a number of nonprofits and then my day job is managing four veterinary hospitals for a global corporation that has them around United States, Canada, and three other countries. So financial issues are something I have to deal with daily, have to deal with the reality of what I can pay people, what our workforce can be, and what's sustainable by the revenue that we have to work with. And my hope is to bring that experience to this process. I'm attracted to it, obviously, because of what's happening in the community with the district and that's something I feel like I could help with and would love to help with.
Any clarifying questions for Kyle? Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle. Thank you.
And then Kelly Strawn is the next person. Hi, Kelly. Come on forward.
Hi. I was in FFA for four years too and I'm standing back there thinking I should have had one of those students give me a refresher course in interviews. You're all a lot more comfortable sitting up here than I am now 20 years later. But thank you for the opportunity. It's also a little bit awkward to do the public interview. It's unusual to see your, the other people, but luckily there seems to be five people who care about the school district and students and have a lot of talents and skills that they can bring to the Budget Committee. So unlike some of the other interested candidates, I don't have a long resume of school finance experience. However, I think that if it's valuable to the Budget Committee, I can bring a set of talents that include things like creative problem solving. I've been to most of the school board meetings in person since the beginning of this school year and it seems like that's a valuable skill when working in school districts, not only in finance, but in other aspects of what you do and what the district office does and certainly what the teachers and staff do in this district. Also, I have a background in communication and marketing. That's kind of my professional and educational background, specifically in agriculture, but I've worked in other fields as well. And while that might seem a stretch for finance and perhaps you'll decide that, you know, kind of the financial background is more important and I certainly respect that, I think it is important at this time that we have people who are good at being in meetings and listening and hearing the priorities of the community, whether that's face-to-face or by email or surveys that are done or just all of the public comment that has been made over the last many months. I think that I can bring, I know I can bring that talent to this committee and I personally think that that's an important skill set to have onboard, I guess. It's not just numbers, it's not just line items and while I completely understand that that's what budgeting requires, perhaps there are already people on the committee who have those skills and experience. Perhaps I could bring a different set of skills and talents to the table to help kind of bring the collaborative, creative problem solving, good listening, and good communication in the meetings with the district office, with the community because this is, you know, these are decisions that are going to be made, not just this year, but I understand this is a, you know, this person will be on the Budget Committee for a year and therefore will be involved in the next round of budgeting and what that looks like. And hopefully this time next year, we're in a little bit more positive place, making some more positive decisions and it'll be really great to be a part of the group that gets to continue listening to the community and hopefully bringing back some of the things that we're missing next year.
I'm just going to clarify. The appointment is for one year, but that one year basically takes place next week. So it's just for, it's just for...
A month, basically.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought it was until next July.
Yeah, it's just this, this set of meetings.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then it can reapply.
Yes, yes.
This position next year, this time.
Board members can, yes, Budget Committee members can always reapply. So clarifying questions for Kim?
I was going to ask Kelly, but I should have asked everybody because I'm curious. Can all of you attend both meetings next week? Are you all available to attend both meetings next week?
That's a good question.
This week, right?
Yeah.
Excuse me, this week? Yes, correct. See, everybody shaking their heads, yes? Thank you.
Yeah, that is important. Thank you very much.
Oh, and I got a clarified question for us. They're not required to attend the 26th, just these two?
No. The hearing is the chance for the public to come give their comment. So it's really just those two meetings. And additional meetings, if we need additional meetings, we don't...
Supplemental budget needs to be done.
Yeah. Kelly, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's it. All right, we are now going to have public comment. This is specific to discussion and action items. Is there anybody in the room who would like to make a comment? Jacob?
Thank you again for having me. Again, my name is Jacob Plotfelter. I'm speaking for myself. I noticed on the agenda for tonight, there was an action item to vote on suspending a board policy regarding the fund balance. Just based on what I've seen on the agenda, I don't love it. I'm interested to hear the board discussion about this. My, I suspect that this action item is there because there's no chance that we're going to meet that policy and so we might as well suspend it. My opinion on that is that that would be like lowering graduation standards because we're not meeting graduation goals. You know, we don't lower the goals because we're not meeting them. And so I would, you know, if that's the case, and again, I'm anxious to hear the board discussion on the item, but I don't believe that we should be suspending policies because we're not meeting them. There should be a policy. There should be a standard to which we're being measured. And so that's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Thank you, Jacob. Kim, is there anybody online?
No hands online right now.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? All right, I guess we will move to our action items, which Jacob kind of intro'd. We have suspending policy DBDB, the fund balance, on the action item and Joe's going to give us his recommendation on that.
Sure. Chair Trager, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to bring this policy forward. So as you see in there, this is a policy DBDB, which talks about a fund balance as a 10% of what your general fund revenue is. The GFAO, which is the Government Finance Office, or Government Finance Officers Association, they usually recommend between 5% and 15%. So we've talked a little bit about ending fund balance. As you see tonight on the report and building the budget forward, we'll have about $1 million that we think we can do. If not, and if we continue, if we follow this policy, we would have to add another $4.5 million of cuts on top of the $8.8 million to reach that number, right? So we're talking about a fairly significant... So we're talking about a fairly significant additional amount of cuts at 4.5. So, we're recommending that you suspend it for this current year. And then you'll have to reevaluate whether you can be at that amount, if you can, if you can actually have a $5.5 million, or whatever your general fund revenue is would be for the following year. There are some places that operate without one, but you actually have one that's good, it's in place. But this is, at this point, for the development of the budget, we will not be within policy because we won't have a 5.5 ending fund balance for us to have that written in there. Does that make sense?
So some school districts don't have that policy?
Some districts actually don't have policy DBDB, which is not a great thing. So there are places that have been added in recently. It's a good kind of a place to make sure, as we talked about before, when you're looking at borrowing, at some point in the future, if you were to go for a general obligation bond, for a construction bond, as for instance, you need to have a certain percentage in the bank. So then you qualify for, you know, a higher rate. So those are the kind of things. And then the other part of it is the TAN that we're using now to make sure that we're able to have cash flow to make payroll throughout, up until November of next year, when the property tax revenues come in. That's all kind of part of that. That's why you have any fund balance. But at this point, we are targeting and hoping to have a million dollars as your ending fund, beginning fund balance for next year in the budget. And that, that will be at our meeting on Wednesday.
Well, for, kind of for history and transparency too, we've, we've been below the 10% for three or four years?
Four years, yeah.
In the past? So it's over the past three or four school years, we've not been hitting the goal of the policy. What would be the, maybe let's talk about the ramifications. Okay, if we suspend the policy, you know, does that take away kind of the goal like Jacob brought up? Right? There's one side of it, but the other side is, do we suspend this because is there, is there other ramifications if we're in violation of this policy or not meeting this policy? I'm just trying to play both sides of this here. What's the pros and cons to either suspending and or keeping?
Good question.
It's best if you follow your policy.
Of course, of course.
And I don't actually mean that tongue-in-cheek. So it's, if you have policy, it's best to follow them. It is possible, and there are times you need to, you know, there are situations. But in this case, what we're trying to do is be very clear that, A, we're not going to make this target. There is no way we're gonna cut another $4.5 million next week. Or actually, I guess by tomorrow, since the budget meeting is on Wednesday. So it's important to, I think it is important to have a target. It is important to get to 10%. That would be great, you know? 7% to 8% is fairly normal, but somewhere between that 5% and 15%. So you need to get to that place to have that as a target. Doesn't mean we're not going to be going for a target. But it is also, you know, if you have a policy, you either follow the policy or you can suspend it for a year and then, you know, bring it back. You say it's a limited duration, we'll suspend it for this next year. And then it automatically comes back in. So you can, there are a lot of different ways to look at it.
If we suspend it for the next school year, it's already putting a timeframe into it.
It already puts a limit on it, and you can, right? And then you can reevaluate at that time. Do you have enough money that you're able to make that 10%?
The, by, by suspending it for a year, we're acknowledging that we're not gonna be able to follow this policy this year. And I think it's important that we make that acknowledgement. I think that's maybe something if done before, it would have brought it right to the forefront a little quicker and easier. And all bets are that we may not the next year, but then, then we've got to make a conscious decision again this time next year, do we suspend it for another year? And, and it keeps it right there in front of us that we're having to do that. Or, as Dr. Joe said, we're going against our own policy, which we've been doing for a few years here. And so, I, I think it's important that we suspend it with the limitation to this year and then revisit it again next year. But we need to acknowledge, we're not going to make that amount. And if we do, as Dr. Morlock pointed out, we'd need quite a bit more cuts if we're gonna make it.
And I like the word "acknowledge" that you said. I actually like it better than the word "suspend."
Yeah.
So, you know, we could consider that. I think the idea is, is that we realize that, that the upcoming budget is not going to, to meet that policy. And that's something that the Budget Committee has talked about for the last few years, but never has there been a formal acknowledgement. And I do think, like Phil said, that that's really important.
So could the motion be changed to just acknowledgement that we're not in compliance of policy DBDB instead of suspending the policy?
Well, I think we sus-
As acknowledging.
I think we suspend. I think that's the proper thing to do.
Use the word of motion. We're suspending it for a year.
I've got a couple of thoughts before we move forward with that. I think policies are, there's the old adage, it's like a fence, right? And so, a fence is there for protection. You probably shouldn't tear it down until you fully understand why it was enacted or erected in the first place. And so I think, yeah, we haven't been following it, but I think we should live in that tension of this is what we're trying to get to. I think just removing the policy to say, hey, we're not following it when there is no real effect, I think we leave it in place because this is what was said, we should have a 10%. And I think just by removing it, it kind of just like, oh, we'll just remove the policy and, you know, hope that we get back to it. I think we should think long and hard about taking away something that was put in place. And we've talked about, like, we haven't been following for the last three to four years, and that's kind of why we're in the spot we are now. So I would caution us before we move forward with, is this the best solution, to tear it down?
There's a difference between suspending and eliminating. We're not eliminating the policy. The policy would still be there. We're suspending following it because if we do not suspend it, then we need to follow it. And if we need to follow it, then we need to make more cuts to get to that 10%. Good point. But we're not taking it off the books. We're suspending it for a fiscal year. But we can't, we can't say it's there, and then, then we're just breaking policy, or we either, or we make the cuts effective so that we're not breaking policy.
Well, I agree with you, Phil. And I'll just provide a little more history, because it's not just been the last two or three or four years. There's been passports too that have treated, treated this policy as more aspirational than, than as a, you know, determinant that we have to follow. And to me, by acknowledging by suspension, it's actually giving that policy more power, the kind of authority that it should have. So I guess that's, that's the way I feel about it.
I would just add, just for more information, I think one of the issues is that that 10% is pretty high. We've talked about making it like 8% in the past, but just have never had the impetus to-
Well, didn't Jackie recommend 8% when she presented to us?
I don't remember that.
I thought I wrote it down somewhere, but, because anywhere from 8% to 15%. But legal, the question legally that I have is if we leave it in place without suspending it, does that leave us more liable for?
No. It just means that you fire me because I'm not following your policy.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, that, because right now, it says that you're directing the superintendent to manage the adopted budget with a 10%. Well, it ain't gonna happen, so I can pack my bag and go. Or, we could figure out, I, I do like, it is important to have something in place. The reason for suspension is that you're not gonna get there right now. It's also important to have a discussion about what's the right number? Is 10% the right number? Is 8%? Is, do you build forward, say, next year, our goal is to get 2%? And then we go for 4%? You can unsuspend this in September if you don't like that either. You could unsuspend it again. It does, the suspension is not forever. This is your policy, you are in charge of it. So I think making a plan with Kim Callison, as she comes in, say, look, here are some of our goals. We want to build toward this number. And you're gonna have two things happening. One, you're gonna want to build an ending fund balance because of the things that are listed in the policy itself, which are protecting the district from doing unnecessary borrowing, which we had to do in a TAN, which is of our 8.8, 3.8 of that, 3.8 million of that is that, right? So if you can stop not do that. If you have reserves for things that happen, like your HVAC stops working, or you have 65 kindergarteners that show up that you didn't know about, that you can teach yours for. And the uncertainties of state and federal funding, which we spoke about earlier from the revenue forecast from last spring to this spring. So those things are all still important. But you're also gonna have to set some realistic goals about, this is how much we think we can save. Right now, we are just trying to get a million, so you'll have more than zero. There are districts around us currently, they're working on their budgets that are projecting a zero. They're gonna start from zero as their beginning fund balance because they're gonna spend everything to start their year. So that's, that's kind of why, we're, we're not going to meet it. So I think it's actually in name transparency and just public acknowledgement, like, we're gonna suspend this for now. And then if you want to come back to it in a month or two months, or whatever it looks like, and then you want to start to talk about that, that's something you can build with, you know, with the incoming superintendent, and you can talk about goals and where do you think you can meet that, and, and kind of see where you are. So, and I understand, I do understand the fence.
Maybe just a clarified question then? So the two options are suspend it, or if we don't suspend it, keep in place, would trigger more cuts?
Well, if you were gonna require, I probably wouldn't go easily quietly into the night as far as letting you make us cut another $4.5 million. Because that would be, if I were directly following this policy. Now, we're in a weird situation because we have an IGA between my organization and your organization. So the joke about firing me is only, you know, that kind of tongue-in-cheek. But it would make it impossible for your next superintendent to cut an additional $4.5 million to build her budget for the following year. So you're creating a very difficult situation. That's why you're gonna have to have that conversation about what the percentage, what's realistic.
Derek, I get where you're coming from, but like, if we leave it in place, then it's just a suggestion of a policy. I have a huge problem then, that then sets precedent for the rest of all of our policies to be not necessarily followed, but suggested, that we follow them all the way across. So I'd rather suspend it so that we're showing that we're trying to actual follow our policies, rather than leave this one here, and no, we're not. Because technically, we should have been doing this a long time ago and putting feet to the fire to do this. And we did. So, I get your point. You, because you, I know how important this is, but it makes sense to me that we would know that it's there. But if we don't suspend it, then how many other policies are we saying we don't need to follow? That's how I see it.
Yeah, I, I see your point.
Following Joe's comments too, to me, well, I think both of your reasoning is compelling. So thank you very much. And Joe's also talk about, it's a, it's about setting a clear expectation for the superintendent. And so, when we do this, we're setting a really clear expectation. Not one that we want to set every year.
There's a timeline to this, when we make the motion, right? There's a- For this fiscal year, the upcoming. Basically.
Whoever is making the motion needs to be specific on that, I would say.
Well, and to Derek's point, and Dr. Joe, Mark, Joe's recommendation, it does seem like we are gonna want to have on a future agenda, discussion of, you know, resetting a realistic policy for the coming year and/or the coming, you know, maybe three to five years to where we can, however long we think it's gonna take to build up to whatever number we set.
I agree. Yeah, policies can be revised all the time. So you can revise it to fit our situation.
Any more discussion? All right, then, I guess I'm ready for a motion.
I move that we suspend policy DBDBGI-1, excuse me, for fiscal year '24-'25.
Second?
It's a move and seconded that we suspend policy DBDB for fiscal year '24-'25. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. Derek?
No.
Phil?
Yes.
Josh?
Yep.
Aaron?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, now for the Budget Committee member selection. So we can adjust the protocol if we, we need to. Debbie and I, what we talked about before the meeting, is that she would call the roll, and each one of us would just identify the one applicant that we are voting for. Before we do that, or, well, first of all, I'll pause. Anybody have any different ideas, concerns, questions about that protocol? Okay. Before we do that, we should probably talk about the reasons why we support the people that we do. And it is extremely awkward, and it's transparent. And so that's why I want to suggest that we mention the folks that we are, or why, why we may be voting a certain way.
Well, I'll, I'll start out then. I'll just say thank you to all our applicants. It's kind of like our superintendent search in that we had, obviously, a number of very good applicants. So thank you very much for willingness to serve. I'll be voting for Dr. Helms. I find his expertise compelling at this time. And that's really the primary reason why I'll be voting for him.
I just wanted to say to all the applicants, and dovetail on what Owen said, very good, very, very good candidates and people that want to volunteer for this. And Budget Committee memberships come up all the time. And so I encourage, you know, four of you to pursue that when it comes. In light of, this one is basically finishing out this budget process. It's gonna be rapid-fire here. I feel the expertise and everything, I think we got a couple real good ones there. The tipping, the hat for me was Dr. Helms with the CFO training. I thought that, that's pretty powerful. So that's where my allegiance would be.
I'll, since we're kind of going down the line, I'll go ahead. Agree, Dr. Helms definitely has a strong application. Presented himself very well tonight. He's also applied in the past. And we were not, we did not add him to the Budget Committee at that time, not because he wasn't qualified, but there were different needs. And like Kelly mentioned too, it's like, sometimes you are going for different, different needs, different representation, because our policy does talk about representation in the district. But because Dr. Helms has provided that perseverance piece, I do like his candidacy. I think Kelly's application was really strong. Kelly has been at every meeting. She comes and she talks to me. I know she's talked to Aaron afterwards, positively but critically, you know? Like, have you thought about this? And what about this? And I, I find that to be extremely helpful and I think a great contribution to our district when we have that level of involvement. So I also like Kelly's application. Jacob's clearly qualified. Kyle is clearly qualified. You know, Deborah, this is the first time I've met Deborah, but she has great enthusiasm. So again, thanks to everybody. That's where I'm at right now. I want to hear what everybody else has to say before I settle, but those are my, my thoughts.
Yeah, I, I just want to say I appreciate everybody, especially on short notice, applying for this just very specific kind of short window position on the Budget Committee, which is super important this year. And so everybody who's, who's come even on short order to come and talk to us in a very awkward environment tonight. But yeah, I'm, you know, like Jennifer said, I'm kind of torn. I, I think of all the candidates, I know, I know each of them, I think, with the exception of Dr. Helms, and I don't really know each other. But I've had the pleasure of working with Kyle on the Budget Committee for years of the city. I've had the pleasure of working with Jacob on the past Budget Committees and here with the school district. And so it's, you know, it's, you know, all these folks that I, that I have, you know, good working knowledge with too, that have the, the great skills to help our district too. I know Deborah and her family very well. And as Jennifer said, you know, Kelly, you know, she's come to every one of our meetings in the past, past several months since the beginning of the year. And I've had several very good dialogues with her. And I always appreciate her kind of outside-the-box thinking and some of the different ways that she's engaged with us as a board and brings a very different perspective, which I think is really needed with our district. So I'm, I'm, I'm very torn. Again, like Jennifer had mentioned, and, and Phil and Owen, I really do like Dr. Helms' skillset that he could bring for our immediate need right now. But I also kind of like the other perspective that, you know, even as, as a newcomer to the Budget Committee, that someone like Kelly's skillset could bring to the, to the table as well. So, again, I'm- So again, I'm, I'm kind of torn here, so. All very, very, very great applicants, and again, thank you for, for stepping up.
I love this community, just because people always step up. And FFA's still here, and also time everybody leaves, so just goes to show what an amazing community we have, and what great kids. Dr. Helms stood out to me. He's got the national certifications, nobody else does, his in-depth knowledge of grants and bond funding. I know Jacob and Kyle got some of that too, but this is specific to educational programs, and his resume is monstrous. I'm voting for him.
Yeah, I'll just echo what all my fellow board members have mentioned, just pretty impressed by the community. Every time there's a need, people step up on short notice, and so really appreciate that. And for the five that put in, again, appreciate you taking the opportunity and putting yourselves out there. And something that stand out with me that Dr. Morlock mentioned earlier is, next year's going to be hard, and so we're going to need the entire community to continue to step up. There'll be other roles that will pop up that different skillsets will be able to fill into. For me, Dr. Helms' skillset, what he could bring immediately, there's obviously several other candidates, but just I think for the short timeframe that we really need someone to step in, like, literally in a day and a half from now, not that others couldn't do it, but I think his skillset matches up.
All right, sounds like we have a, a trend. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, so Debbie's going to call her names, and then we're going to say the name that we're voting for.
Derek?
Dr. Helms.
Phil?
Dr. Helms.
Josh?
Dr. Helms.
Aaron?
Dr. Helms.
Owen?
Dr. Helms.
Jennifer?
Dr. Helms.
Ms. Jordan?
All right, so Dr., did he have to leave? Yeah, because his kiddo was with him. Okay, hopefully he's watching. Thank you for, thank you everybody for applying, and, and Dr. Helms will see him in a, in a couple of days. Future agenda item request. So I pulled up my list that I've been keeping. We haven't been able to get to important things quickly recently, because we've had a lot of more important things. So these are the things that I have right now on the list. So planning discussion for superintendent evaluation, having a feedback tool or survey is something that's on our list, and we have talked to Kim Callison about this, is not a surprise to her, she knows this is something that we've been aiming to do, so we've got that on the list. I'd like for us to be able to get that done by the end of the summer, if we can. That's kind of a summary thing, so that's, that's the first thing. We've got to look back at circumstances, or actions, or inactions that led to the 23, 24 budget deficit. We've still got some wonderings, we definitely have lessons learned. We will probably want to hear some reports from staff, so that's on the list. A finance committee made up of, like, Dr. Morlock suggested, three board members that meet more regularly than the regular board, to look at finances, to learn, to ask questions, and just to be extra knowledgeable about the budget and how it is being implemented. So looking at fund balances, et cetera. We have population study. We, Dr. Morlock says that, you know, every three years, two years? Every two years, we want to make sure that we're, we're looking at that so that we can keep an eye on enrollment, because enrollment means revenue. And then I heard from Owen, resetting the fund balance percent, potentially at least considering it, maybe like a yearly kind of thing?
Yeah, and even if we, even if we don't reset it or change it, we can at least be establishing interim goals for that particular, by any ever annual.
I like that idea. Anybody else have any other future agenda items?
I got one that I wanted to share, talk about next year. I know that we talked to the interim about it personally, but we're going to be so thin next year, like, as far as staff, and I really, I'd really like to really take a look at our student discipline policy again, because there seems to be confusion of what it is, what it isn't, how it's implemented across the district, if it's being implemented the same across the district. I want to make sure that teachers have enough support as they can, so that they're not having to deal with things that they probably shouldn't. Ultimately, this comes down to the parents in the home, starting there, but I don't want to get into that too much, but, actually, I'm not going to get into it, so. But I, I would personally, if we ever come down to it, Madam Chair, I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
If we ever get to it.
Got it. Any others?
That's a good list.
It is a good list.
I think-
We need to whittle on that.
And we, we did talk about the Budget Committee hearing is going to be next week. What day is it again?
Budget Committee meetings are this week, Wednesday and Thursday.
But the-
Budget hearing is going to be Wednesday, June 26.
Okay, so we talked about making that, and, and we need that to be the budget, the hearing because of Kim's needs.
Correct.
But instead of having a regular work session on a Monday, that we just turn that date also into a work session, we may be able to pretty easily, I think, do the finance committee item. I don't think that's going to take too much background work for our staff, so let's just plan on maybe doing that on that Budget Committee, or Budget Hearing date. And then we can talk about other things when we do our agenda setting meeting. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, meeting adjourned.